Okay, hello Bianca.
Hello.
I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time at seven o'clock, May 27th. This is the regular meeting of the Oakmont Borough Planning Commission. I'll start with the roll call. Steve Escudino.
Here.
Christian Gass.
Here.
Matt Blackburn.
Here.
Tony Rossi could not come tonight, so he's excused. We have with us Bianca will be taking the notes here remotely. We also have Kate Dearson, our Borough Solicitor. Patty Friday is the Council Liaison Planning. And Scott Foby is our Borough Manager. We do have two guests tonight. And we'll just move that up to the registered speaker, Mr. Lieber. You can, you can go first. Is he with you, is he with you, or is that a separate discussion?
Oh, he is, my son.
Oh, okay, very good.
Hello, right on the X.
Right on the X.
Hello, I'm Michael Lieber. I live at 729 15th Street. I've been in the borough since 1983. I have businesses on Halton Road, which was taken by the government. And I'm here to try to have the zoning redone for the property that I have behind the Speedway. Speedway, where the gas station is, that was my dealership plus. And directly behind it, several lots that we use for storage and whatnot over the years. Since 1985, we started to acquire those lots. In the past, there were more homes back there. But over time, it seemed to be diminishing in number. I think there's on the block of West Woodland there, there's, I think, five residences right now. And I think four of them are now other apartments, other units. If I had my map, I should probably, apologize, I didn't bring all copies for all of you. But the area is predominantly commercial. There are 10 businesses within that block. And I'm not counting the corner with the mattress or the Verizon. I'm just talking about the immediate corners, the Third Street and Woodland. Okay, so the nature of the neighborhood is definitely commercial. And it seems to be continuing to evolve that way. We had in the past been a commercial property. In the 90s, the borough sought to, since we're using them for parking and such, that they rezoned from residential to commercial. That was, I believe, in 95 or 96, something like that area. Okay, and then to our surprise in 2014, the borough decided to change it back to residential, which nobody consulted us, so we don't need to ask for a crisis rationale, but nonetheless. So you're suggesting you didn't get any notification from the borough that they were going to rezone the premises? No matter the sense of perception. I found out for a chance when I was down in the cutting of grass. I went around the corner, and on the corner, not facing the lot, but facing the other side of the street, was the rezoning that was stated, which is a hall.
I missed something. What happened in the 90s, did you say?
Initially, when we came here, there were three small houses there.
Yeah.
And over time, I purchased those houses, demolished them.
Right.
But the boroughs expressed understanding, because they had to get demolition from this. And I thought, so what are you going to do? That's where our cars there. And everything was okay. Number one, number 10 is the first lot, number 12 is the second.
Well, no, my question was, first you said they were rezoned in the 90s, then you just said they were rezoned in the 2000s, so.
In 2014, yeah.
What happened in the 90s? They were.
Originally, they were residential.
They were, oh, okay.
Okay, back, way back when.
Okay.
And then in the 90s, the borough, since we were using them, okay, for parking and whatnot.
Okay.
You know, we parked our trades back there, service vehicles, inventory. So then they classified, reclassified it as commercial.
Okay.
That was in the mid 90s.
Okay.
And then, Patrick, recall, when they did the rezoning here in 2014, 2015, they reverted to make them back to residential. At that point in time, okay, we no longer had the dealership on Halton Road. The government took, that was back in, which stood by another three to four years. So here we are now, 2021, okay. I've been approached several times, but in the interim, many people approached us, asking about the property, because it's one of the few parcels, little more than a half an acre in the borough. And everybody, oh gee, it's a commercial, oh, okay, thank you, no. And then move on. But the inquiries for the property were reaching, coming in over the half a dozen the last four years. Every one was important to determine that they wanted, they preferred to be commercial for development. They asked what types of uses that they, did any of them suggest that they wanted to be? I believe it was air pro, which is in the, the Brody's Triangle Circuit, okay? They wanted to put it in the building here for their company. And when they found out that it was residential, nobody wanted to jump through the hoops and try to, yeah, change it with the commercial, or change it back to commercial. So the residential, there is a, yeah, over time, maybe 85 on, we demolished the house. I got you. I don't know if you're really, but that whole area back there was a collection of summer homes, going back to the early 1900s. Back at these samples, some of the properties, I can see that they were built in 1919, 1920, 1921. Yeah, they're, you know. You know, some of them are quite old. There's some new stuff though, back there too, that was called the Morris Camps at the time, okay? And it was primarily summer, summer cottages and homes, okay? Because everybody has access to the river, you know. So. Has applied that collection, if you wanted to see what's there now.
Yeah. They're like lettered, just go along with the second page. Look on the second page, it's the, it's the commercial buildings back there. It's not the empty lots, which other neighborhoods.
Yeah, the property, again, is just directly behind the Speedway. If you're on Halton Road, you're sitting in traffic, you can look straight, you know, and you see the lots. There's an old garage park, it's a picture storage. Some buildings.
So, so these pictures are from the lot, this is what's around.
No, he just walked around the street and took pictures of every commercial building that's back there.
I see what you're saying, okay.
I want to understand if there's commercial entities that exist.
Everybody else, I got you.
They're, they're in yellow. Any color yellow in the picture?
As a matter of fact, on three and a half sides, everything is commercial. Small loop路, which is right next door, property number, number 10. Okay, that's the only, applying there adjacent residential property.
Can you come here for a second? I just want to make sure that I heard you, so. I'm not suggesting this area is, is up to date, but are you, so your Speedway, are you saying that these structures here no longer exist? They have to come here now. Sure. There's no buildings on those, on this structure here, right here, the corner. Third, okay, two, three. Oh, these lots are approximately 50 feet wide. But there are no buildings on this, which is not true.
Yes, yes, this goes up to, you have a new property. Speedway's here, this.
Are you looking potentially for this all to be rezoned? The residential areas?
No.
Just give it my parcel here, because it's.
Those three lots, 112 and 14.
I'm sorry, so you're just placing questions here, just.
The block?
Yes.
And it is vacant, except for, there's a garage or something.
Yeah, there's a garage.
Yeah.
And they have storage building.
Yeah. I remember.
No, that's okay, you were, you were, you were off the speed now, yeah. Slower uptick on the side, I think.
If you did it in terms of area, and I did a rough calculation, okay, 75% of the neighborhood, the block of Third and West Woodland, 75% of that is commercial. Just the lots that are identified, there is six lots going up down in the avenue. It's not, it's not.
Yeah, there's no industrial down there. Triangle circuit buildings, not industrial.
It was.
Yeah, it's, it's R3 too. Everything down there is R3, except Speedway and the Verizon store. Yeah.
But since he was commercial, I guess they grandfunded it back down, is that correct?
Well, he's, he's, he's been there, he's, he's, you know, you don't, we're not kicking anybody out. They, they're existing businesses.
While he was trying to, he was a manufacturer.
Yeah, I see. But the zoning map I look at, you have the industrial, where they, you're colored yellow. There's several parcels that are colored yellow under the word I. That's R3, none of that's industrial.
And I guess that new map changed that whole.
Yeah.
Since they, I guess, still operate.
2016 or something. Yeah, yes, but either way, it doesn't.
Their grandfathered in is what I, but.
Yeah, I would say that's true, right, their grandfathered in.
So basically, my request is to change it back to commercials, so I can get the best use out of the property for my own development, or someone else that they can keep it up. By the way, it's no longer, I'm out of the car business, I'm retired. Back to being a civilian.
Well, I can certainly see why you, why you want to do that, if you think it's, you know, it'd be easier to sell the property and get the best use for it. We, we'll have to take this under further consideration, for sure. This is, would be a big step, because it affects all your other, all the people that are residential down there. But we, we should certainly talk about this further.
Well, that's what I wanted to point out.
Yeah.
The existing residential homes there, okay, are in the minority. The vast, vast area, 75% is commercial now. Okay, and, you know, I just itemized the businesses that are there now. And I didn't even include an actress place, or a place on the corner where Verizon is. I didn't include those in the number.
Right.
That's the immediate block of Third and Woodland.
Yeah, those are all zoned commercial, and they are commercial, right.
And remember, there's an alley behind this property.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, that separates then the next one.
Yeah, that's the other thing. I think it would be helpful for some of us to actually go down there and look at this area, because.
Yeah, please do.
You know, looking at these drawings and photographs. We need to get our head, our better feeling for what's going on now, I think.
Okay.
I could see why you'd want it, and we will definitely consider it. But I think, that's the two things I could see, if we can get on, look at it ourselves, and then discuss our general impressions, what we think that you do.
I mean, it's, it's no doubt that it has become a more commercial area than, or at least, you know. It's, it's a pretty commercial area, I mean, looks like a pretty commercial area. It's a heel of a commercial, so I think we.
But the black one, it is a commercial for lots purposes. Because if you, if you point out, if I can point out that the few houses that are left there.
We're pointing out two.
Jimmy, I didn't hear you say that the building where Amanda Lee Glassberg is located is now zoned R3?
Yeah.
Yeah. How the heck could that happen? Okay, I mean, apparently it was industrial at one time, based upon.
Based upon this map, this is probably just the, the previous map. Was industrial.
At, at the time.
Maybe.
Industrial, manufactured, because of the triangle circuits. There you go.
It, it was industrial, it was triangle circuits.
Manufacturing.
Now they are.
Triangle circuits. Mike Lambroge, he owns that property. He's, he sold the circuitry business, and he parcelled out that building, put it back because of businesses. Because, you know, I guess it's classification, it's commercial.
Yeah, yeah.
If I didn't think it was unreasonable to ask for the borough's concurrence, because I want to take it back to commercials, I could do something.
Yeah.
So, two.
Go ahead.
There's a, there's a task in the plan update that, that's us looking at this area specifically, and amending zone and so forth.
It's part of our comprehensive work?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we're in the middle of trying to go through the comprehensive plan, and that, maybe we can even dig into why in 2014, 15, it reverted to R3. Did they, did they think the area was trending that direction, or I don't know why it was? But we, that's the third thing we should look into, maybe do a little digging back into the files to find out why, why some, some of the changes were commercial, are very first person.
Well, Pat, you were on the board of the town election.
I was, I was on commission, I should know these things.
But yeah, that's what surprised us, because we would just presume it would stay commercial. In fact, I even applied at the time, because I might use car.
Right, I remember that.
Okay, and I had the approval of the building inspector, but then the borough manager shut it down. Okay, your predecessor.
No, it was about the Adeline, wasn't it? It's far back to Adeline?
No, no, this was, uh.
Oh, a different guy?
Lacy Justin.
Oh, okay. Okay, does anybody have any further questions for Mike, volunteer?
You can get a hold of me if you have a follow up. I found out the inquiry level.
All right, that's very good.
If you need any background, or if you wanted to be a copy of any of these guys, you can take a look around.
Okay. Great.
Okay.
Yeah.
Certain pictures.
Do you, do you want to get your photographs back? They're awfully nice photographs.
I hear that sound of the walk.
Really? They're really nice. Okay, moving on to the agenda, we review the previous meeting minutes. Does anybody, anybody have a chance to read them? It was a very short meeting, if you ever recall.
I just had a couple of clarifications.
Sure.
I don't know if it's easier, you know, just submitted Reagan.
Yeah, it, it depends. If you, if you want it really accurately done, yeah, you would, you could mark it up and take and get it to her. Of course, they're simple.
They're simple.
Oh. Can you hear us, Bianca? We're going to give you some comments on the meeting minutes.
Thumbs up.
On the third bullet, I'm sorry, second bullet there, under Old Business A, the Boulevard Commission would like to extend the train north. Okay, it was really, the discussion was. We discussed the potential for trail extensions.
Oh, the trea, not train.
I'm sure.
The, on the, on the other page, Chamber Commerce, not very responsive. Or after them, they had no response yet. And then, for reviewing the plan for broader public outreach, that the boroughs not need, is going to send out a four question survey.
You cut out on that last bit, what was that?
The last one was that the borough would send out the public input notification, not Christian specifically.
That four question survey, the borough will send it out, not Christian.
She got it.
Anybody else have anything? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to accept the meeting with those corrections. Second, anybody? Christian seconds. Any discussion? Okay, we'll accept the meeting minutes from the April 22nd meeting as, with those corrections that were proposed. Thank you. Correspondence, or any new business items coming in, Scott?
No, nothing.
Okay. Then we can kind of jump, jump to the old business, which is probably the meat of the meeting, and the intention now is to get to a big progress on the comprehensive plan. And I'll turn it over to Christian for that.
So, we came pretty busy, hopefully, well, public survey took, helped a lot of people too. The, the plan, the, the plan is, EPD is going to see what response it wants tomorrow. If they feel it's good enough, close it out after the weekend, but maybe another blast tomorrow.
She asked me to put another blast on.
Okay.
Before the holidays.
So we'll, we'll see what we get, and then if we have numbers for council workshop, we set, set those somewhere responsible. That's, that's that. And there's, there's, so. Since we met last, I've been in touch with Garden Club, I haven't had a formal meeting with them yet. And then I also get in touch with Chamber, and had a very short meeting with one of their work members. And for a follow up, I think neither of them have, neither of those groups have items on the plan, so there's, there's not that need to go line by line with them, like some of the other groups, but. There's still time to do that. In the meantime, Shade Tree did a ton of work, submitted a lot of ideas through the Google sheet I sent for them, on what they wanted to get in here. And I've incorporated that in a document, that's, also added in, I didn't submit a rep. And then tried to, I guess, based on notes, on discussions we've had, discussions I have with the other groups, and then the comments that we had on, it's, holided all those to be the decision action plans. And see where, one, where there's interest in talking about updates. So I think this, this can help us filter our discussion plan. But also, what's in, what's out, what might change. And this is, at this point is all, this is draft one, all the minutes. EPD has this as well, and once we get the survey in, comments from the other groups too, that, that discussion, I will keep up all of this. That's why I wanted to decide that this is, this is the first pass. So, yeah, on the left side, document, it's really the existing, existing sheet with that status tag. If it's blank, it means it hasn't been done, otherwise it's noted as in progress or. On the right side of the sheet is where we take the items, actually. These are suggestions, right? So either have an update, remove, or, or add. And they're kind of coded to updates, or removes, or gray out, adds, or read. And then the notes are really, my distillation, what I heard from all those other folks. In a lot of cases, that they're comments directly, or their notes are those descriptions directly. So I'm not, I'm not sure what the best way to go about this one is. I can walk through some of the highlights, and then dig as deep as you want, or even take it and adjust it. Does that sound?
Yeah, start with the highlights, and then I'm sure it'll trigger some discussion from us.
I'll go to some of the big additions. On the second page, there are five new tasks, I'm just going to refer to these. Another one of these tasks, the relative funding sub. And these are really coming from the REIT board. They are some of the bigger projects, and some of our groups of related projects, that matter to me, groups that have been on REIT boards, they are for a couple of years, looking at, just in general, some upgrades to access in Riverside Park, regrade claims, trails, river steps. And then, we had this idea a few months ago, temporal access, which is just the, maybe euphemism for adding lights, expanding access to the park over time, throughout the day, not just. And that's lights that come up in, over the years, for fields, for trails. Based on just the success of Chateau Beach, and enthusiasm, of course, for the river, I thought it might be worth exploring other opportunities for that, around River's Edge, or even something, it was a fish dock at California Avenue, right? These are.
They paved, they paved that this week, which is nice.
Oh, is it paved now?
Yeah.
We just, yeah, where it should be down tomorrow, if not already.
Yeah. So, so there's that, Dark Hollow, I think Dark Hollow is actually in the focus for next year, REIT board detention. Just looking at trail and bridge, bridges. So, that's on the radar. Facilities, there's a, there was a building proposed a few years ago, funding was great for it, but maybe you had on it too, because it's a bigger project. The idea is, there's a few building structures, unit service, moving spaces. And there's talk of a fieldhouse, that is probably a big one, project. It's the kind of, kind of thing that might, like. Replace the existing one at River's Edge, which is that Red Brick Building.
Are they, these thing, are they thinking these would be like a community?
Yeah.
Building?
Awesome.
Because it's not, it's not a school building.
Right, the fieldhouse is just a school building for everybody else. I mean, they just use it like.
They use it.
Yeah.
They use it, but it's.
Okay.
The REIT board had someone who was very good at grant funding. Is that person still?
No, I was either.
I think it was two, maybe Molly and Viddy, somebody, was she involved with grant events? Okay.
No, they're, they, they, by their terms, inspire.
Oh, that's true.
Actually, you're going to have to get a grant. We have been looking at RP Millings grant opportunities. They have a lot of money for recreation type stuff, so. But that's, in any case, we threw these projects up for cop plan. I've also asked Carolyn too, you know, what's an appropriate level of detail for comprehensive plan tasks? Do we get to on this specific project like this? Does that hem us in and not camp? So, still waiting at that discussion, I'm sure. Because those are, those are very specific, a lot of these tasks are. The last one there is something that also we've been talking about, talking occasionally, we're on about, is the idea to maybe not explicitly planning, but at least more tighter coordination on facilities. Looking at the recreational opportunities provided by the whole collective system together, seeing who feels the opposite. That's, that's kind of a plan, like a task. So that's, that's, those are big additions. Starting on page five, and then on page six, for Shade Tree. One. This is something, kind of one or two, is the idea of looking at a conservation plan. Then on, for more Shade Tree specific projects, looking at tree and maintaining other trees. They actually have an inventory, it's out of date, but actually, bringing it back to speed, and then using that for items on page six, developing the Shade Tree strategy. So all these, they're, they're comments, who I needed to detail, the number of trees per, per area that, I mean, they were really, I'm glad they were. That love of decent details probably not appropriate for comp plan. So I, I took a run at grouping their ideas into some steps, establishing both the vision. So I, I took a run at grouping their ideas into some steps, establishing both the vision, inventory. Figuring out their correct order of removal, collection. So that's a whole, that's a whole plan. How they go about funding that, those are. There was also a slot here for. This reviewing the existing shade tree, I mean, that's something I.
Do we, do we feel like this whole item five is part of the comp plan? You know, the public tree inventory and all that, it just seems like that's.
I guess the tap.
Item six, I could see, you know, having a shade treatment and a strategic plan or something.
In a sense, it's not just going out and doing one collect, but establishing a routine for people. You can almost tie that or you can almost put that under the G T strategic plan.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's great if, if they're that organized and motivated. That's fantastic, but I, I don't know that it's in our realm. We should just let them run with it and it's just part of shade G commission work.
It will fall under sustainability.
It could.
Ultimately would, yes. And it's appropriate because part of the ordinance work he's doing is about reinforcement plans for developments as well. So we may have some redo, so some redo projects where there'll be some landscaping components that were required for view at the planning level. Based on shade tree ordinance, which we're doing it on place right. I could turn that offline.
On that, I noticed that I left the Edgewater neighborhood task in there, the public infrastructure, that's, you can check that one out, that's on page six as well. So those are the big additions, but large rep and shade tree. Other, it's the other rep related one that's not new, that's sort of refining of the system measures. One seven. Transportation. The system of our plan had three. Three pedestrian trails in the maps. And. Record. Was. We like the idea of. Connecting the parks, focusing on that. And it, and those loops kind of sort of get in there. But if there's a way to, it, it, one of them also suggests the idea of developing a master trail. So we kind of took that as a seed and said, let's make that. Loop all the, the trip of loops under that and then we can slot in. A park to park connectivity efforts within that effort. So rather than having these big separate loop trail projects, we look at. Park and public realm connectivity as a whole with an emphasis on connecting nature. It's not just necessarily. Can I use, I mean, the, the move suggested by those would probably be the same. That a trail plan was one we would have anyway. They're kind of obviously riverside to dark hollow, that's a, there's one way. That's, so that's one of the.
Just another question about the outer loop pedestrian trail. There are natural walkways in town. The Aubrey and Trail, that's what I call the river walk down the actual river's edge. At the track, they walk around and around. When you're dealing with a neighborhood, how do you? Decide that you're going to carve out certain streets to have that be a walking trail when people can walk, can step out of the house and go in any direction they want?
Yeah, well, that's, that's kind of one of the reasons. It may be more useful instead of trying to say we can use it. Let's figure out, answer that question, right? I, I, I wouldn't think that we're talking about building trails. It might be.
Correct.
Or, or, but like, what's that physically manifest as? Focus, those sponsored sidewalk improvements? Is it shade tree focusing their plantings on that? Is it also pairing and restructure it? Between the road or the paratrain sidewalk?
I, I can't see someone saying.
But it's.
To their family, let's take the outer loop trail.
Totally, this goes, it's a grid. If you're trying to get from park, park though, can we make that experience better? Just small improvements to the, the revenue. So I think that, that's where we're. Rather than call it a specific loops, let's just look at the big connections.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
You, you mentioned river walk and so I marked that down as remove, I just wanted to ensure I read that correctly. Because of the, I guess it was, it was explored in the past and.
Oh, there's two different things. One is the, the walk down by the river at the new development.
Yeah.
There was an original idea to connect it all across the river down to Chateau Beach, but there are too many private properties there and that stuff.
So we can kind of move that idea out of there.
It's, it's, it would be peace still though, I mean, the, the, the river overlay district was that bigger picture. Then we could build a river walk, but once the river overlay district kind of got dismantled, it's up there in Edgewater and it's down by Riverside Park.
Right, and it could be.
And you could have it at Anne Street, it's up by the, you know, by the. And, and maybe you could have it on the other side of Anne Street behind.
That, those commercial buildings.
Whatever that's.
Yeah.
Yeah. But there would be big gaps where there's too many homeowners, yeah. And, and it's on here as a, they, they show it going around the most of the neighborhoods or to show it going around. Cause they, they figured it wasn't going to work that way. But I, I, I follow the idea of, of getting from park to park. If we could, like, just say it's Pennsylvania Avenue, just make sure Pennsylvania Avenue is really walkable, both sides of the street shaded, you know?
Yeah, yeah, so. Just your comment from earlier about is it appropriate or detailed? We pull that back and then for, for something like trails, that's where we'd say, yeah, let's, let's study that. I think we have a lot of.
And then the other, the big part of the outer loop that we, we, we're, they're working on is Creekside Park, getting that whole Creekside Park trail concept. And then somehow linking it down Plum Street.
Right, so, so you bring that up, so that is a reference that a huge places in.
Do you?
Transportation. They talked about at one point, I don't know.
I, I think I'm good with having a lot of focus on transportation, cause that benefits the residents the most. There's so much walking and exercising and now there's bicycles all over the place too. More than I've ever noticed in previous summers, cause the, probably because of COVID and that, but there's just so many people out now. Cause it would benefit the community quite a bit if we focused a lot on that in that, in the comprehensive plan. And it should be pretty easy to do a lot of this stuff.
What's, it's early control.
Yeah.
You bring up a good point, because when it's time for the budget. Some of these things, we, you might, as a commission, you might want to say, we'd like to do this, it's going to cost this much, you want to do the budget?
There is also over here, this is a potential crosswalk improvement. I have not, I haven't checked, so that's the one that was studied before. Their five that are completed, I think that whole, it's on page nine, twelve. That whole section changed there.
We can, we actually have a, Matt, we have a letter with J S with photographs.
And is there any timestamp on repair?
Timestamp of repair, no, but there's a timestamp when they retake it, so you know, recent areas, it was one of the Girl Scout projects.
Right. Just below that section. Cause it's come up a few times, but I, I had the algorithm trail extension idea. One tab, one subtask for going south, because Bob is.
Yeah.
At some point they're going to tie it to the, to the.
Could you talk a little bit more about that, what that means? Yes.
The run of.
I'm sorry. You had said you read somewhere about a light rail system or something coming.
Oh, the. Port Authority list, they released their top ten projects for the next twenty five years.
Okay.
One of them was do a study of rapid transit feasibility in the Allegheny Valley. Not necessarily.
Do it.
Not necessarily do light rail, but study feasibility, some form of rapid transit, which could be, which could be fast, just fast.
It could be on this side of the river, it could be on the other side of the river.
They, they call it this side of the river, they couldn't ask them all because of that rail bridge that. That, I mean, that plan is pretty high level, so it's, it's a plan that's just. That's, that's.
It's not imminent.
I mean, they could do the study next year, I guess if they want to, but. So I noted that in here as well. There was a reckless, no action, it was let's to disband a rep work. So just turn that one in. When it comes, participate with.
Cause there had been some talk of Allegheny Valley River coming down from New Kensington.
Yeah, well, they, they mentioned using a railroad railway along. Based on everything I've heard in the last few years, I would never. So that's. That's our green show. On the last page here, some more rap projects. Fourteen A park to park activities, kind of a placeholder for all those ideas. So I think. I guess if there's support for that idea, whoever the else under that. Then some kind of pioneer sky. Ideas we had in the rep, which was pedestrian access to Creekside, which is non-existent. Like the California Avenue right way goes over the hill. Crazy, but maybe it doesn't.
They do steady steps.
The last one, pedestrian connections to Chateau Beach, that's. Somebody tell me where Chateau Beach is. It's very north of.
You know where the hot and speedway, if you go along the railroad tracks.
There's. I know what's there.
There's Brent High. So Brent High's fence. They, we've left the fence in, but the borough owns the first like fifty feet of, of maybe a hundred feet of fence. And all the way there, this long skinny parcel. And all we need, and there's a gate there, all we need to do is unlock the gate and you can go down to the river. That's going to be Chateau Beach where they got what they called the kayak park, they didn't want to call it kayak park, they want to make more, you know, fishing, whatever you can want to do back there. So there's plans moving forward to grant money to.
So how much of the river frontage does the borough own?
Oh, two hundred feet.
About two hundred feet, that's all right.
We actually only owned like a hundred, we couldn't do much with it and Brent High gave us more. They did, they gave us like another seventy five feet just so that we could, if we wanted to put it actually a paved ramp or some kind of way. The paved ramp cut next, pretty early. The kayakers were all for the paved ramps, so they could get their kayaks close to water, unload and park up above. But there's an old civilian conservation corps wall that was built in the thirties to keep people busy. So they built a flood control slope, like a rock wall all along their stream, all the way up there, all the way down to probably California. Underneath the dirt and the trees and everything, the only place you could see it is the Riverside Park. You're standing along the fence, you see all that rock wall, that's under all, that's under all the ground, the trees and everything. All the way along the river, that's somewhere under there. So most, a lot of times the trees are just completely uprooted. And that's what they've done at Chateau Beach, the neighbors up there came in and said, listen, if you take that wall, we have a flood and our house gets damaged, we're suing you and that, that wall will protect it all. So that, that kind of killed the idea of, of, you know, putting, even if you put the wall back, they didn't want us taking out that old wall. It, it isn't a wall, it's actually a slope, it's just the slope, a rock protection slope.
It's just like what you see at Riverside.
But if you look at Riverside, it's beautiful and clean.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's all over, it's unhidden. And even, even when they built the new Hilton Bridge, they realized they had to disturb that and they put this large rip rack back, just large rock to do the same function.
So the homeowner doesn't have access currently to Chateau Beach or?
No, it's undeveloped. The gate's still locked and it's all overgrown with Japanese knotweed and all that kind of stuff. But we have a ramp now to put some things in there and even the rep board added a little parcel at the top. Where they can have a little pavilion, like a picnic pavilion, and they were going to create a dog park, where you could have dogs off leash within a fenced area. So I think that might be moving forward too, I don't know.
Phase one is get the road cut in and a turnaround for cars to drop off kayaks. A kayak slip to get kayaks onto the water.
Well.
And then.
ADA accessible walkway, so that's where all the money, that, that was the big ticket item. Not the road into the kayak launch, but to build an ADA accessible walkway down, when you only have a hundred seventy five feet to get down to the river. That had like a switchback on an aluminum walkway. And, and that's what we needed to grant money for, but that helped get the grant money, because it's ADA accessible to the river.
And we do, and, and. Alligator County Conservation District is still reviewing it and still. Giving Senate some headaches on reviews, essentially they, we have told them in writing that there's no wetlands on the site. They said, okay, we'll prove it, so we have to prove the negative and do a mitigation plan and it's, they already started doing it, so. Our latest review letter was like, you know, you know, you told us that the soils are this type of soils there, well now prove that there's those types of soils there. So there.
Cause there are no wetlands there, there's.
There are no wetlands.
I've been all of that.
No, it's, it's dry, it's, it's nothing, it's, it's a discharge place, but. When phase, when the permits are in place, we are able to go out for phase one of the charter. And get that reviewed, like completed, then we'll do phase two, which will be some additional amenities like the dog park and maybe an area to store kayak. But the goal is all, what was the goal? The goal is also Fish and Boat Commission annually awards grants for boat slips. To local government entities and I, and our local representative actually is on the committee for Fish and Boat Commission. I was thinking of two boat slip locations, so you get your boat off of California Avenue, you have a slip, you can tie it off and.
Cause you, you couldn't launch down.
Now, now you've actually parked on the slip, so I didn't go park the car and come back.
Yeah.
And then do a slip down Chateau Beach the same way.
That'd be good, that would work.
That's, that's a high vision plan, like five, six years from now.
That rounds out the, the rep's main progress. I, I took a run and just adding two public ground projects that have been on my mind, so we can scratch these. Number fifteen.
The first was, just, what page are we on now?
Last page.
Look at ordinance, it's, it's, it's kind of dictate how the public realm can be used by businesses, some, I mean specifically outdoor dining, but. Justice.
There's. Project that's in the works right now at the old gas station. And the alley in between the gas station property and Jessica Row. And the, there's a grant that, what was the name? The Quon community.
Community Foundation.
Foundation.
Yeah.
Got a grant to buy the property, they're going to develop it into a parking lot and then give it to the borough. And it's, oh, you already know. Does that tie in with what you're saying here?
With, I mean, it's, depends on the parking lots and stuff, I guess. So the, the other one there was having. So the, the other one there was having, that's. I, I described it at the meet, I worked on a project like eight years ago. Uh, small, historic downtown, scaled very much like. Maybe 200 yards of Main Street. They had a four, they had to dig up all the utilities and replace them. Um, but they didn't wanna put it back the way it was, because it was only four feet sidewalk. The license was not in that. What, why the firm used to work, redesigned for them, it was, we called it a vunor for trouble. It's Dutch term for straight street, pedestrian street. Basically, you kind of eliminate the curve. You use with materials, same as the sidewalk on the road, kind of create a sense of enclosure in the street, and then now. In this place, they actually close it off on the front. That's the, that sort of thing, otherwise it's a. Public ground, it's kind of that spot, one doesn't have a central square.
Right.
That's essential to anything, so anyway, that's, that's, that's me projecting.
I was taking, taking that alleyway between the restaurant, parking lot, brick line, pavilion, promenade area. That somehow flew either asphalt design connected to the drain, the train station across the street. And take up the train station above that area too.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's a perfect area with that train, pavilion, train station pavilion across the street, except for Allegheny Avenue. Being so heavily trafficked.
So the Gateways Project, which is in, sorry, in progress, creates, I'm not sure if you're all familiar.
Sure, okay.
Tom, Tom Bryan has done some work on. Kind of identifying a, a design pattern language for public. Something that, through materials or color signage, kind of represents the essence of the town. Uh, it sets up really nicely what. Future public ground improvements could, could do. Elsewhere in this list, I called out. Those early on, specific amenities. This Gateways is a project, yeah. Basically, it does the work that would have to be done anyway, some of these other public ground projects. Or begins to, so. But whether it's, whether it's that parking lot or. Trying to figure out how to tie the boulevard station. Allegheny Avenue, Apple Runway up to the station up higher, or. These other tasks that deal with public ground.
Some of you worked here back in 89, when the town celebrated its centennial. And the Garden Club of Oakmont. Started then and over 20, 30 years. Did the Boulevard project, which was from the bridge to the boulevard, the boulevard down to Plum Street. And Oakmont. Never really had an identity. You could pass through Oakmont not even knowing you had been there, and so the, um, the clock tower and the pavilion. Were two amenities that were added to give you a sense of a downtown, a town square area. So these other ideas, we'll kind of take it up a notch.
Yeah.
And give it a little bit more character, and the Gateways is, um. The three obvious ones, Verona, the bridge, and coming in from Plum. Um, and giving it more of a sense of place and a, a character. When the landscape architects to do the Boulevard project came, they did a lot of historical. Research, and Oakmont doesn't have, it's not a Victorian town, not a colonial town, it's very eclectic. And the idea was not to put a false face on the town, but to, um, enhance the positive. Uh, eliminate the negative and camouflage the things we didn't have any control over. And it was successful, but now that's over 30 years ago, and we need to take a fresh look and. Do more things. bigger things.
Yeah, the concept of a town center somewhere around that area, Adela Brown Way, the train station. The clock tower, that would be, that would be a good place to focus too.
So that's, that's the list. Steve, I think he won for comments, number of comments. On the Google sheet. Alright, Steve. I didn't know if there's deep enough like of, of high interest that you wanted to talk about specifically. I, so. Digest this, I, working with the public input with. After EPD takes a look at this to make sure. Out of hand. And we're gonna have a conversation at some point about how to set priorities. It's, you know, it's not to say that ideas are better or worse, in other words. EPD supposedly are gonna be looking to figure out where the synergies are between these different things. Where the funding opportunities are. How to order a rational outside of just. But if. Have a first strong purpose, let's talk about first. In terms of setting priorities, whether that's specific things or kind of systems or things you value and focusing on more. Question.
No, just green is additional stuff, blue ink is again. Update, black is.
Removed most.
Gray is removed, I can get that. Okay.
Unless we have more.
I'm not sure, okay. Great, okay.
Can you think about, um. Any type of organizational. Structure that we have in place that could get things done? It's the record. They have a history of, um. Getting things done, charging a course and. Getting input from, or buy-in from the community. So if. If they can be used as an example to create other committees with similar. Enthusiasm and follow through.
They get to work on fun things, everybody likes recreation, so it's kind of an easy sell. And so many of those projects too are construction focused, actually. There's a lot of experience on that board doing just that.
Right.
I think that's probably in part why. They, they not have much projects that contract, for instance.
And they're motivated because it, it adds to the quality of life of their family too.
Yeah, yeah, everybody on board is kids at the playgrounds, sports.
Thank you for your good work, this is great.
Before we break up though, um, a big part of it, when you first look at these drawings of the comp plan and all that stuff. A lot of it focuses on land use and housing, they had the whole Oakmont divided up into all these areas. A through O, I'm wondering if, if we should. Pick a couple areas and try to focus on the areas that Oakmont needs the most improvement, or the most place we could have an impact or something like that. Should we zero in on something like it? It, it kind of might come back from the questionnaire study too. What, what do people don't like, or what's, what's, what's their least favorite things about Oakmont, maybe that's where the areas focus on or something like that.
I wish I could remember the rationale behind the changes that were done. In the, um, behind Speedway, it was talked about earlier today. Because I, I remember discussions about. People, as you're going to do, go down and take a look at that space, and there was a lot of good reasons why. They did what they decided to have it be right now, it, it wasn't done.
It was done during the winter, really.
Yes.
I, I do, we did, and when it was funny, it's still a great thing that, like, Ben manager.
Yeah.
Struck him down, I was like, no, we went to court and he lost, so we actually went, I went to Commonwealth Court with him. Over the use of those properties. But part of the transcript from that zoning airport, which I have, is Ryan Drosky giving a lot of testimony. About why that area is zoned as it is, I'll pull it up, don't need to find, it's just, it's, you know, it was just kind of interesting. You know, I think that had to do both with how those properties were seen and traffic and, you know, I think lots of them.
So he lost a couple.
Yeah.
What, what's funny is we might wanna check in some of his facts too, because.
Yes, his facts were funny in court.
I mean, it, it, it's a strange place over there, I mean, it's, it, the whole area is, is cute.
Oh yeah, definitely, okay.
And when you're over there, you have a sense of it, uh, just being very out of place with the rest of. And it just has.
Well, it's, it gives, it gives that history that it was the Morris camps, like vacation homes and things like that. Some people took their vacation homes, made them into full, full homes, other people just tore them down and built a, a warehouse, a factory. They did whatever they wanted as long as time. But I'm looking at the comp plan drawings from 2004. And they show that whole area, R3. And he said we changed it to 2014, 15. Here it is, 2014, R3. But deeper down on one of their scenarios, they talk about. I'm not sure what this being proposed, promenade improvements, but they colored various things, and they kind of colored what's going on over there, and they colored it as. Residential low density. Then they colored the Triangle Circuits building and a couple other things as industrial. And then they colored Woodland, where his parcels are, and all the houses, and all the way along back to Brent Tag. General commercial. And, and there are a couple of commercial things spread in there, Mc, Mc, McGinnis.
There's a cardio, it's car repair guy.
A car repair guy.
Couple restaurants back there.
There's, there's Mike's Wife's Place, there's a couple other things. Here it's colored incorrectly, I believe, it's all red, even all the houses on Woodland. He, he said the three are vacant, his, his three are vacant, but the houses next to him are all rentals and things. They're all shown as red on those things, so. But when you go to the zoning map that they use, it's, it shows as always R3. So that is an interesting area, and why, I, I think people were hoping that it would turn more residential, that's why they, if they did change it to R3, they would turn it to take it more residential, not less.
Well, in, in reality, it's Speedway that's helping with that. Right, but if you want, if you want the area to be residential, then Speedway is not.
No.
It's not helping.
No, not at all.
I don't know, it seems a little dichotomous, if you want that area to be the industrial area, but. Where the big buildings are currently, and then we're saying we want the rest to be residential. Can't have it both ways.
Yeah, there's a couple of big buildings. I know, I acted like a less, no, I'm very.
The guy has, well, I guess, doesn't have a. If the property across the street is R3.
I'd start to change the zoning somewhere.
There's also new transition areas, I know, you know, we've done those before where it's a skinnier, you know, that lower impacted commercial, where you really focus on. Noise, light, traffic, uh, because there's some commercial uses that could, you know, maybe be. Behind there and some that would not, so. Just being mindful of that, there's, there's ways to zone for that.
Oh, okay. Because right behind them and right next to them are houses, big houses.
But there's always a transition from commercial to residential, uh, maybe. You know, and, and typically they do a commercial zoning that's really white in terms of permitted uses. I don't know, so that's a new. Seems like they're applying a new solution, converting that, you know, like they're the Mandalie's. To, to get it redeveloped to maybe multifamily residential, I assume R3 is a multifamily designation.
Yes. Yeah, it's also the smallest lot you could have.
He just wants to be able to sell those lots. And now his Speedway, right, the view, it's probably hard for him to sell as residential. Cause they could stare at the back.
Did you stare and stagger against it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, I think XD district buys a lot of.
It does, that's true.
Let it evolve kind of as it needs to, but. What's nice about it is it forces the buildings to orient and address the street, so then you don't get. Auto repair shops with a lot of food cars in front of it.
Yeah.
That's, that's what's like a nice avenue to district. It puts, it puts a little, it puts that this, a little of the subuse, but more on, more. Maybe it's mitigating issues perceived.
That wouldn't be a good parking area for Chateau Beach, right? Maybe that's.
No, he's, he's too far away. He's only too far away. Chateau Beach will have its own park.
It has public ground, yeah.
Oh, those are.
Yeah, I mean.
Public box.
Like a new road building.
It's just hard for me to, I don't know, go back there, it's. I, I don't, I can't visualize.
Yeah.
There had been some talk of, of a car wash. But I don't, I don't know.
A car wash, there was a car wash once proposed a long time ago for Speed, the Speedway location. But that was before Speedway came on.
Yeah, I mean, I almost think that maybe prior, there was a push to make it residential, but. Speedway just changes the equation.
It was a car dealership before.
Sure. But, but the car dealership, I would imagine wasn't blew up. At night, or maybe it was.
It was.
Was it pretty bright at night?
Well, it had.
It was out of business. The car dealership sat there empty.
Yes, the government took it over.
That's what he says, no, that, he's thinking about Holton Road. I mean, that bridge. The government didn't take it over until, what, what, what?
No, he, he feels that the government took over.
Yeah, what the heck that was.
I didn't ask.
I figured it was penned on, but it really said the cover.
Does he mean the lawsuit?
I, no, I, you know, but then he mentioned that, I think, I didn't know if he meant he lost like a franchise or something.
Yes, that, he did.
Was that, it was, cause then he was like, then we survived a few years on our own, it's like.
It was just repairs.
Yeah, so, so I don't know. There, there's a lot of elements there that are a hundred percent lining up.
Yeah, his dealership was, was empty there for years.
So he lost the franchise.
Yes, yeah, the, the company, the big company close to.
Well, the idea of. A Porsche that Airbnb mixed use is interesting. That way it gives it some flexibility to come back, it'll, it'll probably never come back to residential anyhow, not our lifetime.
What, what I like about that district that we already have is that it emphasizes. Let's think back to Starbucks, we had MXD there. Buildings in the right spot from the get-go, he's not designed, he's not putting it in train oriented around the track.
No, what do you mean, I didn't follow.
Um, be- because the MXD district says which way you have to face your front door.
Okay.
And how close you need to be with the street. Or it forces that compatibility, and. That sort of approach tends to mitigate. Incompatibility with uses to, to an extent, especially in, there's not really any compatibles with small scale commercial. You have to have. So. In an area like that, which is in transition, we have a district that lets the next, lets the landlord figure out how to mess. We just, our district makes sure that doesn't create. Negative impact of public. Uh, that's kind of a winning approach on my mind.
I'm trying to think if there were. I'm trying to think if there were problems down there with incompatible uses next door and planes and all that kind of stuff. I'm trying to realize why it reverted to R three. If his, the map he had, had industrial in there, I don't know what year his was, but his is even older than that. But I do have some old maps. Guess it doesn't really matter what it used to be. They also broadly think that after, there was a period of time when they thought maybe that, that commercial businesses then wouldn't survive. Slowly they start going away.
That begs the question, when a space goes vacant in that building. Why is it allowed to be released as commercial if it's, if that's owned R three?
Right, the triangle circuits has done, they've got new, new people.
Yeah, as long as you. They don't give up these. When a use discontinues, a business closes. I mean. Why would it, I don't know. Is the building grandfather or is the use grandfather?
Use.
So why do we allow commercial uses to go into vacant spaces on a property that's owned R three?
Because as long as you say, I have a commercial building. And I have a commercial use now, my, the next person can continue that commercial use. As long as it's not, you have to, you give up a commercial use. But you have a right to continue it and if you market it as such.
There's not.
But if you gave it up and became residential for a while, you couldn't ever go back.
Or if you stopped, you know, you gave it up and you advertised it as residential, there, there's. There's just, you know.
What if it's that empty for two years?
Um, there's a lot of.
Yeah, yeah. And you can never take it where you could go to industrials, you could go to worst.
Right, and there, there usually is provisions for bringing it to making it more compatible. So maybe it went from industrial to commercial, not being compatible.
Yeah, I mean, can you go down and, and the borough to a lower, like, can you build multifamily residential in an industrial district? Can you go down the chain?
Not necessarily, it depends on what's permitted. I don't know if we allow residential or industrial use, so.
Yeah, that's that whole chart that's in the zoning ordinance.
I think that's not allowed. You can go down, yes.
If it's permitted. So a lot of industrial, industrial areas will not allow.
Industrial does not. Only working side, though. They allow for anything that's, you know, that's a lower classification to. Done in a higher class, you know, a more, more shit use. That's why I asked if that's going to be allowed here.
Sixteen is. Are you looking for the title block?
No, the audit says light industrial.
Even. I'm surprised the owner of that property, you know, Mandalays, when that got leased, so.
Continuing, was just continuing the use. And if you look closely on. On Plum Street, the, the use as an auto dealership is a little missing. And in fact, it's now zoned MXD two, but on the corner of Plum and Alliant Boulevard is that car dealership. It's been there for years. A, a young kid called me, says he's buying the business, I'm going to continue the car dealership. That's why I'm continuing to use. It closes up, then I'm going to call Kate and say, okay, I've got it closed, what do we do? Like I said, we'll, we could talk offline about it, because nothing's official.
That's our gateway.
If you're coming in brand new, no. No. You always want the cheat sheet, if you go to our, our website, go under Borough Code, chapter two oh five. There's a table, it's called the principal land use table, which has every use defined by the ordinance. And then the grid of what's permitted, gray, forget it, not allowed.
So no industrial, no residential uses are in our industrial. And it is you, home-based businesses are allowed in.
Which means there's probably a house somewhere, a couple of houses back there.
Yeah.
Leave that, leave that table open for later.
Whoever said, nobody want to build a house there because. How close it is to Speedway. But you can't do commercial, they're using, property basis is huge size.
Yeah.
You can make a nice apartment building.
Yeah.
There is, there actually, if he looks further, there are, there are some things he could do, used by condition or used by ruin. That were non-residential.
Yeah.
You just have to look.
He's owned R three, is that?
That he's owned R three, yes.
He could also face. Well, if it's an apartment building, he could use all three lots and face it third street, face towards triangle circuits or something, not face towards Speedway.
So when he said that he didn't find out about his zoning. You, you were at the court with him.
Yeah, so when he said. We said when he did, he knew, and I think it was clear at the time that he.
Okay, I mean, you've tested it, of course, you'd be aware, you contested something.
Well, so, yeah.
Or, or maybe he maybe he didn't find out and then he contested it after.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm getting to that point of the conversation.
Right, so he knew, he tried to say he had a right to use as a non-performing use. And we said he, he never established it as a legal non-performing use.
Yeah.
Worrying on the, on the details, but.
There are regulations about how you post something and they, the regulations were followed. Because he personally, face to face, wasn't told. He felt he wasn't informed.
He didn't get mailed a letter or had a.
Which is the excuse you could use for all sorts of.
Sure.
He even, I, I remember, I think, went over and tried to park a couple of cars there and said it was still parked at active use of the car dealership. A couple abandoned cars sat there for a while and now it's going to be used back to.
And then the.
He, he's a little bit of a wheeler.
Yeah, I can see that.
Well, does anybody else have anything, Christian, or are you, do you get some feedback at least?
Yeah. EPD still kind of tell me about it. Send that back to you.
Okay.
Also, the public, no, no public comment yet?
No, they're being answered, where, they haven't been tallied yet, right?
Yeah, I don't have a summary.
There could be six people, there could be six hundred people, I mean, I don't know.
Those are six.
I know, it should be.
Those are, I think, a lot of. They're not specific answers about these tasks, but.
The text alert went over almost thirteen hundred individual text phone numbers. And next to Oakmont gets, I get a couple hundred views every time. And I'm going to re, I'm going to refresh both and so, you know, they're still pleased, we want you, we value your input. Please take ten minutes.
Yeah, I'll take a motion to a German meeting then. Steve. Steve moves. Seconded by Matt Blackburn, all those favor.
All right.
All right, thanks everybody for coming, we'll see you next month.
Thank you, Bianca.
See you, Bianca.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too.